Okay, good evening, everyone. It's Tuesday, October 6th, 2020. It is 6:01. We're in the lower theater of the town hall and the Zoom link is available on the website. We first need to meet as the Rockingham Board of Liquor Commissioners. Call that meeting to order. Looks like we have one, two, three licenses. We have a couple licenses to approve tonight. Here they are in front of us.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the licenses for Donovan's First Class Liquor License, Donovan's Third Class Liquor License, and Donovan's Outside Consumption Permit.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Donovan's First Class Liquor License, Donovan's Third Class, and Donovan's Outside Consumption. All those in favor would signify by saying aye.
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 They pass. That's all we have for the Board of Liquor Commissions. We need to call to order a meeting of the Rockingham Board of Health. We have a couple items on that to discuss. Nice. A nice presentation.
Susan, please open up the email with One Center Street. Have each file labeled in turn. This will reflect the series that I will bring to the testimony. I have a sign-in sheet. Anyone prepared to participate in the One Center Street discussion? Please sign in, full information. If you participate or plan to participate, you have to sign in.
Yep, I was gonna bring him down for him, but that's all right.
I'm already gone.
I have a Rockingham Health Order that is draft for the board's consideration. The board has not seen these materials yet. They are to hear these fresh along with all the citizens interested in the topic.
Now, I have these.
Give you a headset.
Yeah, I think it would be actually nice to have a headset. Thank you, Dev, for reminding me that I need to be on mic if I expect to be heard by those of us on the video conferencing. So with the One Center Street, because I am six feet apart, I'm going to take my mask off because it's a challenge for me to talk. As I said, all board members are seeing these materials from the start, with the exception of Peter Golick, who I'd like to acknowledge. I need his help often for the procedural stuff, the legal stuff, and so he does a good job keeping me out of trouble. Per the guidelines of Town Health Orders, I personally served the owners, Lindsay Van Schuyck and Courtney Van Schuyck, the notice of intent and the procedural rights. They are aware of the hearing tonight, have elected not to participate. We are going to go through the public health order. We're gonna start with item number one. This will serve as my testimony. I will also acknowledge Chief David Bemis, and when he arrives, Fire Chief Sean McGinnis. They will assist on this testimony. Number one, this building property is located at One Center Street. It's a single-family home owned by the Van Schuycks. The home is presently uninhabitable, lacking access to water and wastewater services. So it is uninhabitable. The property has been in variant states of neglect for several years. The town health officers have been working with the property owners since April 2019, largely involuntary cooperation, voluntary compliance measures, with the exception that we threatened a health order the fall of 2019 for the over 100 bags of trash that were on the property. As the health order indicates, they have made several attempts to clean the property over the last couple of years, but it's never quite resulted in compliance. The town health officers have determined this property remains a public health hazard. I'll draw your attention to the exhibit here, which shows a photo of an aerial of the property as well as pictures of the trash. We visited the property today, and it's still more or less, it's a show game, things move back and forth, but it largely is in the same condition that we see on this poster. Every month lately has resulted in additional trash. Our voluntary compliance measures have actually had the opposite unintended effect of increasing the amount of materials that gets deposited on this house, on the property, although nobody is living there. We see additional damages to the structures, the basement and the foundation on the primary building, as well as the accessory structure. These things are falling into neglect, and every month we see additional materials just popping up on the property as part of, I'm not actually sure what it's part of. The reason for this health order is actually very, very simple. It has declined to the extent that we now have a significant rodent population. So this is, while not enticing for any of us to live there, it is in fact very enticing for rodents. The neighboring residents and myself have independently seen rodents in the building, on the property, and unfortunately, their activities do not, are not restricted to the property. On your notes, you'll see a little map, a strip map, if you will, One Center Street, and then those yellow portions are part of an exhibit that is called affidavits. Each one of those properties has provided testimony recorded by the police chief that indicates that rats, rodents, are crossing their property boundaries and impacting their own buildings and land. This is our evidentiary support. Like I said, it's extremely simple. It's simply an acknowledgement confirmed by the health officers that we do have a rodent infestation at One Center Street. We are requesting that the Board of Health consider an order that is on the second part of your draft health order. It says, "One Center Street be cleaned of trash and debris no later than November 1st; order that the building and grounds be treated by a licensed pest control service; and that official documentation of those treatments be provided to the town health officers; and last, order that the building and grounds remain clear of debris, and that the property undergo a regular pest control service." That is the end of my testimony.
Yes, sir.
Sir, I have my handbook notes here. Chuck, did you mention that you served the paperwork on these individuals?
Peter Golick is citing the Town Health Officer Manual. Per the conditions of that manual, I served them the notice of intent as well as the, what is called, procedural rights statement.
Okay, if you have the handbook there, number two, serving the notice of intent must be served by sheriff or deputy sheriff, constable, or other person authorized by
We read that provision as the zoning administrator, health officer, particularly in my status as a health officer, we were able to serve them as well as the nuisance ordinance, which they were also served as. So we're serving them at multiple levels. The only thing that we don't do right now is, in my capacity, issue municipal tickets.
Yeah, I just, point of clarification, that's all. It does say that needs to be...
On page 11, yes. We thought we qualified under those provisions.
Was Chief McGinnis with you?
Chief McGinnis is with me at all times.
He's a police officer.
Yes.
Did you guys get the written affirmation that they were served? It says either they signed a paperwork or something somewhere.
The individuals in question refused to sign anything.
Okay, I just...
No, thank you. That's one of the reasons I engaged you early on in this process, you keep me out of trouble.
I don't know about that.
So, anything else, Peter?
Uh, no. There's just a couple of points that I just wanted to clarify and make sure we're all clear on those.
I got a couple of questions also.
Go ahead.
So you delivered service in hand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did you note on that service that subjects refused to accept service?
Just in my own working notes, yes.
Okay. We're good.
Susan, anything, any questions?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
So for the record, do you know how many times the two of you were at this property? Just rough, over the duration of time?
You guys alone have seen me dozens and dozens and dozens of times, more than that. So we go there once or twice a week, every week, and we've been doing it for two years now. So let's do the numbers there. We've got at least 100 visits that we can claim. I've been in your house personally about a half dozen times monitoring the situation.
And in your opening statement, it seems clear that we've exhausted all hopes of compliance by repeated encouragement and hopes that they would take care of this property?
I've indicated in my testimony that it's actually getting worse. After we started voluntary compliance, it like expedited the deterioration.
Okay, so then, hearing all that, seeing these photos, hearing this whole story for as long as it's been going on, am I clear that it appears what we're discussing here possibly might pass? If they fail to comply with this order, the lien of the property would be the resort the town has for the next course of action?
Yes, we have existing, we have delinquent taxes, we have a number of claims on the property as is.
And it's dated November 1st for a show of...
We wanted to give additional three weeks of effort for them to realize this is serious, please clean up the property.
Okay, I don't have any other questions. Peter?
Just another follow-up. The evidence you have collected here, how was they, how were they obtained? I see you've got drone pictures there.
So the question is, often this is a concern, and thank you again for mentioning this, Peter. So we have a, an interesting situation in that the Tombergs, the neighboring property, they own six to eight feet on this side. I have permission to use that. In these areas, each time, I would specifically ask permission from the Van Schuycks, receive permission to enter upon the property. I've been in the house, I've seen it at various extents, but to your point, which is extremely important, we cannot be caught on the property without express permission. Once the order was served, we no longer have permission to access the property.
Thank you very much for that clarification.
So when you, you get a complaint that the foundation is falling in, you have to request permission to the homeowners to see the structural integrity, safety of the neighbors, abutting residents, before you could do your job to investigate?
In many cases, in the village, we can see quite well from public rights of way and/or by utilizing other abutting homeowners, their permission to, you know, look from their fences, et cetera. Now, Mr. Chairman, I would indicate that we have a number of residents here who have lived with this situation, and they might have comments.
Sure, I don't think we have anything else from the board if we have some residents public that would like to speak. We just need to speak into a microphone, so we have a table with a mic over here. Just identify yourself for the record, and feel free to share your thoughts.
Can you hear me through my mask? My name is Lou Tomberg. We own the property at 7th Center Street, which in turn owns half of the driveway of One Center Street. And like Chuck has said before, this has gone on for several years between owners, but it has become ridiculous, ridiculous. It's a bad sight when you're driving up 121, you come into this town, you're going to Saxon's River or wherever you're gonna go, and you look at this mess, and it goes up and down and over. Thank you for passing the ordinance back in January of 2019. We're coming up on anniversary date. We need action. Bottom line.
Just for everybody's clarification, because your testimony serves as evidence, please explain that relationship you see where people on the property then scatter rodents and you encounter them.
Speak into the mic, Chuck.
My son lives at 7th Center Street, and he has taken photographs of rodents that he's had to either kill or scare back over across the way. We've submitted those photographs to Chuck, and he has them for the record. I don't know what else I could tell you.
Can I ask you what your, um, second sentence in your affidavit? Ingested poison, the rodent?
That's my son's statement, because he's living there. I felt that he needed to do that. He has a couple of dogs, and because of placing rat poison on the ground in the garage, the dog inadvertently thought it was a biscuit and was having to be treated for rat poison.
That was a year ago.
And you paid for all that? Nobody offered to pay for that?
He paid. My son paid.
Yeah.
My name is Jim Aldrich, 8th Center Street, and I know this is getting expensive because I've had to have the exterminator there twice to put down bait boxes with bait in it to kill the rats. If I can't get reimbursed by the town, and I feel my value of my property is going down because of the ugliness of One Center Street, something needs to be done soon.
Anyone else like to speak? I need a microphone, sir. We'll get you one.
Thank you. My name is Mr. Sly. I volunteered on a Rockingham Recycling Center for over 17 years with Gary DeRosa. It's just a shame that Gary's not there anymore. And anyways, I'm here to complain about a problem down there. Now...
It's a separate item. We just gotta finish up this health order, and then we'll take you there in public comments if that's okay.
Okay.
I don't know if you could hear me on the mic. We'll take that up in the select board meeting. It was a separate item.
I'd like a clarification on one item.
Yes, sir.
Having volunteered at the recycling center a while back here, a while back, there was a subject that brought over 100 bags of garbage. Is this the property that they came from?
Yes.
I would say personally encountered it myself.
All right. Now, I don't know what kind of lateral or latitude we gave to that individual when they deposited their garbage at the recycling center, but what, are they just not taking the garbage out anymore? And they're bringing more in?
They're bringing more in, and yes, that's kind of, the thrust of this issue is not that it's unsightly, it's that we now have habitat for rodents. That constitutes the public health. So the pattern is the accumulation of trash which creates a habitat.
It was piled up in the backyard. It was four feet high by 10, 20 feet long.
But I've read, I think I've read it in a couple of these affidavits, you actually have people stopping by it periodically at night, dropping stuff off?
No.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm good, I'm just...
Got an extra one there if you want to stick it on that table. Okay, so...
It wasn't anybody.
Often the owner of One Center comes under the veil of darkness and brings in more vehicles, more bags, a trailer behind his vehicle, and unloads when it's dark.
So we need a motion to pass this health order, or do we just...
Yes, as the Board of Health, I would ask that if you're ready...
Entertain a motion, and from what we've heard, the testimony, witnesses, affidavit statements.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the health officer to enforce a public health order on One Center Street and authorize the Chair of Select Board to sign such order.
Need a second?
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the public health order, now discussed here tonight, and have the Chair sign it. Any other discussion? All those in favor would signify by saying aye.
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 Order passes. I'd like to thank everyone for their hard work, and I, it's a shame for all the folks that have been dealing with this, and hopefully we can get some forward progress in our beautiful little village here in the town of Rockingham. Okay, that's, so we have another one.
The second one is 66 Atkinson Street. I have...
Did you sign this copy, Chuck?
If you want, yeah, go ahead and sign a copy, and I'll keep it. Susan, please open the email titled 66 Atkinson Street. You will have four separate files that we will speak to consecutively. They're labeled. Is there anyone here that wishes to participate in the 66 Atkinson Street Health Order?
Did anyone say anything? They needed to sign something?
Same procedure as One Center Street, same issue that Peter Golick reviewed for procedure...
One second, we have Mr. McPhee would like to enter, if we could let him in. Want me to do that? Sorry. I don't know if Shannon's hosting the meeting.
You might want to see if he's got comments on One Center.
Before we close, I'll check if he has any comments on the, what we've discussed here as a Board of Health.
Please attempt to connect audio.
Go ahead with your presentation, sir.
Thank you. 66 Atkinson Street, the only difference is that the Bellas Falls Police Department had to serve Chris Glenn and the notice of intent and procedural rights. I was unable to find him, so I had to utilize the police department. Building and property located at 66 Atkinson Street is a former church and community center. 66 Atkinson Street has been determined by the Village of Bellas Falls to be an unsafe building per their conditions outlined in their own Unsafe Building Ordinance. This determination was made in October 2018. It is in fact outdated and fails to capture the additional building deterioration over the last two years. I will make note that the Unsafe Building Order that has been implemented on the books by the Village of Bellas Falls is not the reason why this health order is being pursued. So that is completely separate and has nothing to do with the unsafe building. The building and grounds continue to be used for yard sales. People occupy the building to include the re-establishment of a night watchman for building security. In your supporting evidence, you have a photo advertising yard sales in September 2020. You have a photo of the night watchman's occupants, his little living space. People who occupy an unsafe building or property constitutes a public health threat to themselves, but also to any emergency responders who may be required to go there in the case of a full or partial building collapse. Every effort by the town, a health officer, and I also have a zoning violation on this property, to achieve some kind of compliance, just to leave the building vacant, leave the building, basically, or in the property vacant from use while it's in unsafe condition has failed. So I am requesting that the building be permanently secured against entry no later than October 13th, that the building be inspected and certified as being secured against entry by health officers, police chief, and the fire chief, and that we want the property owner to also comply with requirements such as boarding up windows and doors, which allows people to enter illegally. And this is primarily the north side has a little yard area that can host these yard sales. Order that the property be fenced off and secured against entry no later than November 1st, excuse me, and that, and once again, that the property be inspected and certified as secured against entry by the aforementioned officers. That's the end of my testimony.
Anyone from the board like to go first? I have, anything? Susan?
I'll sit.
Just have a couple questions for clarification. What date was the property owner served this?
Saturday, September 26th.
And you denied to be here tonight?
I never heard back from him, and the same reason I had to ask the police department to serve him, I'm unable to get a hold of him.
And then, I don't know if, acting position, could you, could somebody clarify what's happening with the fence and jersey barriers and the cost? It's kind of the same issue. I'm just trying to, I remember originally that the village leased it from us or something, but now it's the town. I'd like to... I'd like to, just an update.
Deb and I can try to wing that.
The town owns it.
Or Peter.
Does not own it.
Our understanding is when we initially did this, that the village was paying, um, for a certain dollar amount, we paid for some months on the Jersey barriers and the fencing. Um, after that date, we stopped paying. However, the materials could not be removed because the same problem occurred. The fencing, um, was protecting the children and pedestrians from slate that may or may not at any time fall off of the, the building. And now we also see pieces of the windows on the south side of the building um, also falling off, and it's to prevent anyone from using that crosswalk, that sidewalk.
I completely understand why it's still there. Just, do you know, Andy, does the town own that stuff?
I, I can speak to that. So, um, yes, the town owns the barriers, and the village had rented them, which actually came to the sum of half of the price of the barriers.
And the fence, the town owns the fence and the barriers?
Correct.
We're not being charged. It's just, uh, providing safety still.
Now, that is what the town is doing. Originally, the barriers were rented from the village.
And he was gonna tarp the roof to protect the slate from flying off the roof.
Correct.
Okay, that was it. Thank you.
Um, Chuck, uh, clarification. Has, has anybody actually observed people in the building? I, I myself have caught glances of someone coming in and out of that building at, at odd times, but.
I have personally observed people using the building and have used, personally observed, um, the yard sales. Village officials, to include President Deb Wright, has independently observed it as well as Sean McGinnis. So we've been monitoring this. What finally pushed this to a head was the same day we found a night watchman in the building. I had spoken with Chris Glennon to make sure that the building was vacant. I was assured it was vacant. And then three hours later, I was in the building looking at the night watchman setup.
Any other questions on the board? We, anyone from the public wish to speak to this matter? Please identify yourself and make sure the microphone is, the green button is on, please. Yes, ma'am.
Chuck stated the date that he served, notice to Mr. Glennon concerning, um, having people in the building, and that was the twenty-sixth, he said. In the following week, which is either the, Monday, either Monday or Tuesday, or I don't know, it might have been Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, whenever the crossing guard, my husband Cass Wright was there, he called me from that location stating that there were two people, one was in the building already, and another one was going into the building. I immediately called, um, Sean McGinnis, and he had, um, Chief Femas go and speak to them at that time. I'm not sure what was found inside, but it has been, it, obviously, he did not care about being served. That was it.
I mean, I wasn't mentioned either, but I've witnessed people inside the building, not, not just milling around or working on the exterior. I've in multiple events, and I'm pretty sure I have that logged if I were to look back through my telephone.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I observed that, I spoke with the person that was in there. Uh, he advised he was playing music in there. This was after the order, um, was served. I told him that no one could be in the building. Uh, after some time, he left. Mr. Glennon called me later, um, and I spoke with him, and I told him it was my understanding that no one could be in the building. And that his night watchman and then himself could not be in the building. And this was after the order was served.
Anyone else? Do you like to speak? Okay, we're about, this is your opportunity if you'd like to speak. And then in particular, number four here on this order. Uh, you know, as a firefighter here in this village, um, with the reports of people being inside, that's a do not enter building at this time for us, and then if we show up and, uh, a night watchman or whatever is happening in there, it changes everything, so it's a public safety issue and I don't know if we have any other discussion. We could move on this if we entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I would move to authorize the town health officer to enforce the public health order for sixty-six Atkinson Street as presented, and authorize the Chairman of the Select Board to sign said order.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded. Uh, execute public health order sixty-six Atkinson Street. No other discussion. Uh, all those in favor would signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, health order passes. And I'll just check with Mr. McPhee if you had any comments, if you'd like to comment on One Center or sixty-six. We saw you joined late. Give you an opportunity if you'd like. Otherwise, we'll move on.
You may move on, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. That will close, uh, the Board of Health meeting. And it is now six thirty-seven. I would like to call to order the Rockingham Select Board regular meeting. Are there any additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and/or pressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting?
Yes, um, we have a. Yes, would like to enter a, um, a waypoint policy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could you mute your mic, I think? Thank you. Ooh, some feedback. Thank you.
Would like to enter this, uh, waypoint policy, uh, for today's agenda to be, um, looked at and ratified at a, a later meeting.
Noted. We will add, uh, waypoint policy to be ratified at a future meeting. Well, I want to put that, um, where would you like to put that? How about four C? That'd be okay? Any objections? Sounds good. We'll put that at the end here. Any other additions? Okay, we need to approve the minutes of September fifteenth, twenty twenty meeting. Everybody get a copy of the minutes?
Yep. Move to approve. Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded to approve minutes, uh, September fifteenth. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Leads us to public comments on items that are not on the agenda. Uh, each person will have three minutes.
I'd like to make a comment, please. Arnold Cliff.
Hi there.
Hi there. How you doing?
Very good. Yes, sir, you're up.
Um, I'd like to make a comment, uh, with regard to the application of the nuisance ordinance to a property neighboring our own on Mandiga Road. On August the fourth, my wife and I provided a statement to the Select Board complaining that the town had been slow to take remedial action as provided under the nuisance ordinance to require the owner, Mr. Lake, to clean up his property, butting our own on Mandiga Road. Uh, we appreciate the town has made representation to the owner on need to clean up his property, and, and, and that Mr. Lake has removed some items, but there remains significant unsightly debris and other items littered around the house, garage and barn. Much of this litter remains, as I say, some partly eaten by a top hole, and together an assortment of abandoned cars, boats, snowplows, and so on. Uh, the point is that this undeniably decreases the value of our property, which is the stated purposes of the town ordinance to prevent. In our view, therefore, the property remains in violation of the town's ordinance. We were informed that a violation notice was to be issued to the owner in early August. Uh, we'd like to know whether that notice was ever served upon the owner, as required by the ordinance, and if not, why not? In any event, it's over three months since our original complaint, and the town is regrettably, in our view, not taking sufficient prompt action to remedy the situation. As noted in our earlier statement to the Board, the town is empowered to take corrective action itself to clear up the site and impose fines for continuing violation of the nuisance ordinance. We think the time has now come for the town to take action under these particular provisions. And then secondly, we understand that, as provided for in the ordinance, a report was written some weeks ago after a visit to the property by the town staff. We have at least twice requested a copy of this report, but our requests have been ignored. This is a clear violation of Vermont State Statute, uh, one VSA three one eight B, which requires the town promptly to produce, uh, the record for inspection. And indeed, it provides that that should be made available within three business days. So we would like that, uh, report, and we were told that it does exist, to be made available at the town, please, uh, town offices, uh, and I'd have to say if you, the town continues to violate this law, we would have to take it up with the state attorney general. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And, and, and that, this is in public comment. I would maybe try to get on the agenda someday so we could discuss this in detail and further. That, that would be a recommendation tonight. As this is a public comment, we can't simply dive in.
No, certainly. I understand that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
My name's Elijah Zimmer. Uh, I'm with, uh, BIFTA, and we're working on a, um, holiday promotional campaign. Uh, try to, uh, draw up business for the downtown, and, um, one thing we would like to draw the Board's attention to, there are a number of street lamps around the island, around the parking areas that could use maintenance, and since we're going to be having a lot of things happening in the evenings downtown.
Mr. Cliff, could you mute your mic if possible? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, certainly.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's okay.
People to feel comfortable parking, um, in the island parking lots, especially since we're going to be using some of the parking, uh, for other activities in the, um, in the square. So we just want, uh, people to feel comfortable parking on the island and, uh, not, you know, feeling concerned about, uh, you know, going back to their cars after dark. So there's, uh, several in the, um, the island park, which are overgrown with trees. And there's, uh, four lights along the, um, the railroad track, along the, the walkway connecting the two parking lots, um, which are pretty much not working anymore. And there's two in the Bridge Street parking lot, which are, um, pretty well overgrown with trees and ineffective. So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you very much. We will, it's been noted. Manager and Highway are here tonight, and we will address the trees and lighting issues. Thank you. Anyone else? You're up. We need them to get you a microphone.
Thank you. Like I said, my name is Mr. Sly. I've been volunteering at the Rockingham Recycling Center for seventeen years with Gary DeRogger. Sadly, he's not there anymore. But anyways, uh, the reason I'm here is down at Recic, well, I know Peter. Peter was volunteering down there for a while. Anyways, there were two buildings down there, and anyways, uh, Josh told me that the, one of the metal containers was to be removed for the fire department. So he asked me if I had keys to the building. Who had keys? And I told him I did. There was my personal stuff inside. So I unlocked them, showed Josh what was in there. He's got a lot of stuff in here. There was a lot of stuff in there. It was personal. The locks were personal. I was allowed to put stuff in there for different people plus myself. So Josh told me it had to be cleaned out. Now, there was hollow car, birch doors. They're all finished and everything else in there. There was, uh, French doors, which to be replaced today would be over eleven hundred dollars. There was, uh, automatic, uh, hand towel dispensers, brand new in there. There was an eight-foot step ladder in there. I had purchased this myself from La Valley's with the banister with the two posts with the, a case of the, uh, I can't get near it. The, the spirals that were on it. But there was a lot of stuff in there. It was all electrical pipe, Lurman Storm Doors, bed, uh, frames, uh, universal ones, which I must have gave, I was, over the years, over two hundred of them. Plus, the ones were no good. I had given out for people using for the angle iron. But anyways, due to the weather on Saturday, Wednesday and Saturday before, uh, Labor Day, I said, Josh, I can't get it up because if the doors get all wet, they won't be no good. The phone, we were the same way. So here's, I said, Josh, Labor Day is coming up. This was on Saturday. No, it was on Wednesday. I says, I will come down here tomorrow, and I have everything cleaned out of here.
So we're, we're coming up on three minutes, sir, for public comments.
First of all, let me give you a favor.
I would recommend this, have you tried to have a discussion with the manager about this matter? That would be my recommendation. There's.
First of all, what I want to know is, the chief, the fire chief was the one that cut the locks on there. What right did he have to cut the locks off there?
This isn't an item on the agenda, so we, we can just hear your concerns tonight, but I'm trying to give you recommendations moving forward. It's just a public comment. We hear you, and, and you're, we've, we've been to your three minutes. Okay, we're now, anyone else? Public comment? Now we'll move on, uh, to the agenda. Item number one, highway. Andrew Howarth.
All right, um, we didn't complete all the paving because, uh, Hyde Hill, which is, uh, number B, I'll start there. Bucky Adams is gonna be starting, um, here in the next week, working on Hyde Hill around October fifteenth. And, um, we're gonna trench patch it for the winter. That'll wait if it is any settling, settling out, it'll, uh, happen over the winter. Well, then we're gonna pave it in the spring. We'll raise up all the manholes. And, um, cause Bramley Way and Top of Pine, Pond Road were on the list with Hyde Hill, and it's all in the same area. So we're gonna wait till the springtime to pave those three areas. It'll be about May. End of May, we'll probably get them paved. So, um, any questions on that?
Wasn't there, we didn't get a grant for half of that project, right? That's why it got delayed, or that's why we can't do what we?
Yup. Yup. We're only replacing the pipe now. We're actually gonna take, dig the road down a couple of feet, put all new, uh, material in just from, uh, above the road by the brook, all the way down to, uh, Laurel Ave, but we didn't get the grant for that. So all we're doing is replacing the pipe, so it should only take a couple of weeks to do that.
What was the delay on Hyde Hill?
Bucky Adams. Everybody's so backed up this year because of the COVID. And we're supposed to start it back in August, and yeah, no, it's, uh, he's asked for several, you know, delayments on it, so. I tried to get him to come sooner, and he said there's absolutely no way. I tried to get him to come sooner and he said there's absolutely no way.
So where, where's this pipe going now, Andy? It's going from the, from the entrance? Off that property down through to Laurel, uh, Laurel Avenue?
It's, yeah, it starts right at the uh, entrance of the brook.
Yup.
And it probably goes down right by uh, the Studley Residence. Right there is it, it turns the concrete. We're only going to there from the brook, just partway down Hyde Hill.
All right. Thank you.
Yup. And on C, final listing for personnel for the winter, we've hired uh, we're back, we're going to have a full crew for the winter. We've hired some staff. Um, I still am going to use someone from the village though, to help train the new guy we got for the sidewalk tractor. And I want the uh, guy from the village to learn how to plow the dump truck. So if somebody gets sick, I got somebody I can, you know, for a backup.
Did you say uh, did you say who, how many got hired? Did you mention that?
I'm going to hire uh, one full timer and two seasonable. Plus we have a seasonal guy for Saxon River as well. For the Saxon River Sidewalk. He plowed out there last year, last year. So it'll be nice having a full staff for the winter.
So you feel like you're well-staffed?
Yes, yes, that's.
That's a relief.
Yes, it's, it's a big relief. Not having enough help in the winter, it's, it can be stressful.
Good.
I mean, I got one shoveler right now, can always use more. But other than that, we're good.
Could someone volunteer for that or you gotta have, you gotta be on the insurance and everything?
Yeah, it's, if something happens, you get hurt, you gotta, you know, workman's comp gotta cover it. So you, you gotta be getting paid, I would imagine.
Yes, we, it can't be an unpaid position.
Um, the uh, Highway Department General Update, do you want me to go over that too? Should be all in your packets.
Um, seems pretty self-explanatory to me. Would anyone like to hear more detail? We all got the eleven general update sheet.
We've been pretty busy the last month, so. Right now we're ditching Top of Mandago Road and um, the Saxon River side of Rockingham Hill is getting ditched. Then we're going to go back onto the Pleasant Valley Road. We got some more ditching to do on that before we get to winter.
And the, the drainage at the meeting house?
Yup.
Were the gutters always there?
Uh, that's a good question for Gary.
And then next question is, why did we put stone on the gable walls? The water runs off the eaves.
It's, it's not really relevant. It's just curiosity.
In response to um, request for proposals for um, architect uh, to address the meeting house plaster that's cracking. Um, they had a, also did a structural analysis that identified some of the cracking was from part of the building settling. And there were some issues with the drainage and foundation stones. So um, while we were doing the work and had um, the professionals hired. We addressed the drainage ditch with the assistance of the highway to minimize the cost of that and do it within budget.
So engineer type uh, historical person drew, drew that up?
Yes. Yup.
I just never seen the stone on a gable. And typically.
Um, question for Andy. Uh, Brockberry Mills, you uh, did Gypsy on that?
Yup.
Uh, you, any intention of going back, pointing the center line on that?
They've already done the center lines for this year. If I call them back to do it, it's going to be extra. Cause they go through and they do uh, certain roads throughout the year for us. And just being this close to winter, I mean, I figure we could wait till next year. I mean, I can call them back and have them do it. I think it's just going to be extra though.
Well, it's just, it's uh, you know, it's back road. I, I realize that, but.
Yeah.
Center line on it before and if it gets uh, it's foggy or anything like that.
Yeah, I mean, I, we.
Know where you are on that road.
Yeah, we have some sticky things that are yellow that after they do paving, I could put on the road for now. I mean, I can call them back.
Would probably be a bigger help.
Yeah.
Anything, but.
Yup.
Don't, don't bother calling them back to pave it. I mean, uh.
Yup.
Not, not this year anyway.
Okay.
Doesn't make any sense.
Anything else? I have a question. I don't know, being that you and Chuck are in the same room, I'll ask it. And it's been asked locally, and maybe you guys would know who to get in touch with, but the railroad tracks just on the other side of the arch bridge. Are her, in horrendous shape and I guess a motorcycle went down the other day. Who would we, or who could we talk to about repairing those before more people get hurt? It, it was asked to me many times. These folks live here. These folks use it, so I didn't know who to ask. But they're in horrific shape.
I'll um, I'll talk to Town Walpole Select Board first and then um, cause I'm going to assume it's already on their radar. Um, we've heard a lot about it recently over there. So um, but let me, let me get an answer for everyone because it's true. They're, they're quite hazardous at this point.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Andy. Thank all your men as well for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Number two, finance. Shannon, are you there?
I am here. So we are twenty-five percent of the way through the year. Um, however, for payroll purposes, we're twenty-seven percent of the way through the year. Um, there's really nothing to know currently uh, except for our year-to-date savings. So we have already saved, and this is just in salaries and wages alone, eighty-three thousand dollars. Um, that is savings that will not go away and depending on hires and things of that nature and what the winter brings. Will determine if we continue saving at this rate. But there are other savings that will continue such as the uh, Lister and Planning Assistant, the Assistant Clerk Salary. The Maintenance Supervisor, um, and a, a large part of this, and thanks to Andy. He has saved us forty-five thousand so far in highway wages. Um, and I don't think that anyone feels that there's been a lack of work done. But he has uh, definitely worked with a short staff and this being his first few months as supervisor, so just want to say thank you, Andy. Um, so I, I'm open to questions on the financials and just to know, um. There are still a couple of entries to be made. They're pretty, in pretty good shape and the tax entries, I'm just waiting back from the school. We are not that far over in taxes. I made us the significant entries. The school has yet to bill us. Um, which is unheard of and we have been reaching out to them, but we are still waiting on that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
Shannon, Peter Golak here. Did you get that uh, page of questions I sent you?
I did and I'm working on it. Um, we can go through them now if you'd like, or I'm happy to um, send you my responses in an email, whatever you prefer.
Well, we can do it right now. It's not going to take that long anyway.
God bless you.
Thank you.
Uh, page two of eighteen, the fire department charges revenue, there's thirty-five thousand. What's, where's, where's that, where's that coming from?
That's the sale of the truck.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if that included fines, because I've been asked if any of the fines and in terms of, you know, reimbursements for, have come through or anything.
Yeah, so if we, if someone would prefer it in a different line item. Um, I put it there because I didn't want to put it against the expense because it is revenue. Um, but I'm not sure if you guys have a different preference.
Nope, that's fine. Looks, know what it's for. That's all. Um. On page three, also I noticed the town clerk revenue is only a six, six percent, six point two two. That's pretty low.
Um, so that's licenses and permits. Uh.
I know, but I'd say it's, it's just low. I, I just bring that to a point.
Are you talking about the license and permits altogether?
Just the whole, the whole budget, the whole uh, uh, item there and it's, it's just, it's uh, six point two, uh, twenty-two percent.
So the entertainment licenses haven't started coming in yet. Um, which is uh, out of fourteen thousand, that's two thousand. Um, Chuck could probably speak to the zoning fees, but. Um, overall, you know, these kind of come in, oh, and the parking permits. So those haven't been issued yet for this fiscal year either.
Okay. Speaking of zoning, go ahead.
Oh, yeah. So and then the um, like the alcoholic beverage permits, stuff like that. So typically. Uh, we don't see this revenue until later, later in the fiscal year. It's not something that tracks at the twenty-five percent or.
Um, I just picked it up because it was, it was a low number.
Yup.
Uh, speaking of zoning permit, uh, uh, faced, uh, are the permits issued? In helping gaining money or is the money, is the permit held until the money's paid?
So right now, um, we're starting to pick up on processing zoning fees, but we have been um, we have been very slow up until recently. But to answer your question directly, um, a permit is considered issued once we receive the fee.
Thank you. Okay, page six uh, of eighteen, there's a item of forty-six thousand two twenty-five for maintenance at the waypoint.
Um, so I had um. In the village budget, which you guys will see the financials for next week, I had actually. We had an article for the police and fire building and I just need to do the same for this. So we had been coding things differently. And so what I want to do is um, create the article so that you guys can see exactly what monies are for the article and move that. So we are not over budget for the maintenance at the waypoint.
Okay, I'll have to look that again. Um, I noticed the recycling expenses, there's one item for materials and supplies. I assume that's referring to the uh, safety items that were put in down there.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. Yup, nope, just picking up. Um, so page seven of eighteen, Economic Development CLG Projects, uh. Uh, there's a, a large item there and I, I assume that's a plaster item. I think, pretty sure that's what that's about.
That absolutely is. You're right. Yup.
Now, page eight of eighteen, Insurance Liability and Workman's Comp, the eighty-three and eighty-four percent. We need to get a report uh, on what's going on and what's causing this. This is, is at twenty-five percent through, we're eighty-three percent?
No, so.
Heard of.
No, so this is fit, we're fifty percent of the way through our billings for our insurance. Um, so overall for this category, we will still come in at ninety percent of budget for the year. Workers' comp is high and that is due to our claims that we have put in.
Can, can we get some sort of report to at least try and analyze why those things are happening? Um, uh, you know, I, I understand.
I can, I can't, I cannot give it to you um, with names or even departments. I will make sure to validate with the LTC what I can share with the public because this is all HIPAA and um. It confidential information. Um, but our workers' compensation did go up and our general liability did go up. Um, however, in other areas it went down. So as far as budget purposes. We will be at ninety percent of our budget for the year for this section, but those two will be over.
Okay, uh, yeah, I was just thinking, because when the, the LCT guy came down and went through the uh, recycling center, he mentioned there was a lot of. Uh, the injuries in the highway department, when I didn't get into it any further than that, for the same reason as you said, it's personnel stuff, but.
Well, and you guys are very aware of two of the accidents that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I knew that was in there somewhere too also.
Yeah, well, specifically that we have ongoing cases that are still being paid out. So we can get into more detail, but it does, that's, you know, we need to be careful because it violates HIPAA.
Yeah, I like bringing it up because uh, the, the gentleman there from VLC team mentioned we, we might want to look into that and try and analyze why that's uh, why we're the highest ones. Pretty much in the state for a workman's comp, according to him, so. Um, page nine of eighteen, uh, under the rec department, their office supplies are doubled. Cultural Entertainment's at ninety-nine percent. I assume that's because of the theater's operation and things that got knocked out of here. And then Building and Grounds Maintenance is sixty-nine fifty. Did they buy, I think I saw something where they bought something recently. Or is that more of those wood chip things or?
Uh, I can let Chuck speak to this, but the um, the recreation, the, I'm sorry. Yes, the um, cultural arts and supplies, they are generating revenue through that, but I'll let Chuck answer that question.
There's been a fair amount of changes at the Recreation Department. Um, it's, one of those expenses was a heat pump. Um, but the, their budgets, which anticipated, uh, were laid out prior to the pandemic, have changed dramatically. Um, it might be worth having the Recreation Department here at the next meeting to present to you in full detail, all the ins and outs of their program.
There was a separate item, uh, line item there that went in, uh, that uh, on the warrants anyway. So I saw that for the heat pump. What happened to that, you know? Off the top of your head.
Um, he made the request, uh, we, it was within his budgets and uh, we just added it on, but I think it's, it's an issue of trying to um, have additional savings from now on in terms of heating and cooling. No, but I, I'd like to um, use your comment to say, we'll have the Recreation Department here at a future meeting, just to get into these details, because they have been adapting and changing dramatically.
Yeah, for that meeting, if we could have the um, material for the last heating system we replaced two years ago.
Will do.
Would be a good discussion if I'm hearing now, we're replacing it again.
No, it's not a replacement, it's an augmentation.
Heating, a heat pump, a split. Just have, just if we can get that information.
Will do.
Talk about it.
Okay, uh, just a couple more. Uh, page ten of eighteen, then the Rec Department again, uh. Saxon River Lease, I think we need to revisit that. Uh, we haven't been out there for three years according to Ryan and we're paying them uh, rental. The only stipulation in there, the lease agreement is about snow storage out there.
So we, I did ask Ryan and he does need this lease um, in place. So when, if he's coming to the next meeting to present, we'll also just have him discuss this too.
Okay, just, it's two thousand, we spent six thousand, we haven't been out there, that's all, over three years. Um.
He said we are using the facility though.
No, that's not what he told us at one of the meetings, but anyway. Uh, page fifteen of eighteen, I think Andy answered one of the questions. Paving's at ninety-one percent and he said, we're not even done with the paving. I know we did a overrun on Grizzle Drive, I think. Um, that was mentioned, I think Chuck mentioned that to us. Um. The uh, bridges uh, on Depot Street, uh, I know we only budgeted a thousand dollars this year, uh. And we spent fifteen thousand three ninety. Uh, I think we need to, I think we were talked about looking at reserves or putting up, starting up a, a reserve. Item for that bridge down there, seems we're going to be responsible for ten percent of the costs down there.
Yes, um, as far as this budget's concerned, we can cover it through the reduction in wages. But yes, we had discussed last year, perhaps creating a reserve account.
Yup, I remember that. Yup. Uh, did you ever get an answer to that thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars that was budgeted but not spent in the twenty nineteen report in the uh?
I have an IAM meeting with the auditors in the coming weeks. We're uh, exchanging audit information virtually and then they'll be here the second and third of December.
Okay, yeah, I just, just asked it because uh, I know I asked you a, a while ago and I haven't come to answer yet, but. Now, the last one was there on one of the warrants, um, page three of uh, seven on nine sixteen. There was an item there for the Bridge Street Lights of forty-three hundred and six dollars and fifty-three cents. Was that just a monthly charge? Seems awful high to me.
No. Um, that was not a monthly charge. At all. Um, but we, I will have, I will get you the information and send it to the.
Yeah, just checking when you get a minute or two.
Sure.
Right, yeah, sure. Okay, I'm done with that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Shannon. I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
And me too.
Get some rest. Anything else? Move on. So item three, I see, but I don't see anyone here. We just have an update or. My understanding is they're going ahead with closing the bridge and either. Not listening to the community and the emergency service issue.
Hold on, I'm going to um, we might be able to just knock out four. I'll. Hold on, I'm gonna, um, we might be able to just knock out four. I'll text Laura Stone. She will then call in. So let's just do a flip, if you don't mind.
So we're gonna move on to number four while we try to get a hold of Laura Stone. Uh, Gary Fox. Couple updates here. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so in the manager's lot, uh, we have held, um, some, uh, food truck events and, uh, difficult to to plan ahead because of the weather, but at this point, uh, Saturday this weekend is looking good and uh, the plan is for, um, we have at least Jamaican jewels as, uh, many others as can come out. Um, uh, and, uh, uh, live music in the manager's lot, the event's from, uh, four to nine PM. Uh, let's see, for for grants, um, we did receive a no on our large ask for the Vilas Bridge, the Northern Border Regional Commission to, um, uh, provide about a half million dollars to match the New Hampshire DOT's, uh, scoping and design work. Um, we did, uh, we did hear, we haven't got a grant award notices, but did hear for the community development program, the BIFTA Light Up BF uh, program and the, uh, town hall and waypoint programs, um, that we put in for to, um, uh, for COVID mitigation, um, uh, the engineering and hardware for improvements in ventilation systems. Um, and, uh, supplies and equipment for the outdoor events in the winter to be, uh, attractive and comfortable. Um, so those are all looking promising. We also, um, uh, they received some more federal money and, uh, we received a notice today. These grants are constantly in flux because the, uh, the Federal Cares Act came out kind of late. The legislature had to, uh, put in funding and rules, and the funds have to be spent or have to be awarded by, uh, December, but uh, at any rate, they're increasing those amounts. So we do have the opportunity, um, to address, uh, more issues, which, um, uh, we are on top of and will be taking, uh, full advantage of. Um, regional marketing grants, BIFTA and the town were successful in those, and those are being implemented right now. The uh, the waypoint is getting electric vehicle charging stations through a grant that work at Green Mountain Power and Lawrence and Lober, um, and and Potter are doing the, um, electrical work, um, and, uh, concrete work to install those, um, somewhere between two weeks from now and four weeks from now, depending on their coordination. And we will be reimbursed, um, uh, close to forty thousand dollars, uh, for those, um, uh, from the grant. Expenses just went through, so we don't have the submissions in yet for the reimbursement, but, um, that will come in. Um, that's, uh, pretty much on the grant updates. There are, um, uh, consistently more coming up, the, uh, the local government expense reimbursement. Uh, we, we have been trying to, um, have contributions towards the sludge dryer and towards, um, uh, police cameras, and we're we're not sure how those are, um, uh, working out at this point. Um, uh, they may not, but we do have, we we will be getting significant reimbursement on, um, uh, all other areas. Yeah, I think that covers it.
About your waypoint thing?
Okay, we'll take that up now, so, um.
Make that for.
Um, the the waypoint center.
Do you have, did you get an email of that, Sue? Susan?
Yes, I got it. I got it.
Great. Stefan, you probably haven't. Did you see it?
Yeah, I've got it right here.
Oh, okay.
You're good.
So so the the town's, uh, statement on the waypoint center, the the first two items are uh, strive for excellence in cleanliness, appearance, service, hospitality and interpretation is number one. Number two, will create a positive impression of the town, region and Connecticut River Byway. Um, so that has not been going on in recent times with the, um, uh, vagrancy issues there and uh, Chief Bemis, um, uh, wrote a great policy which you have in in front of you and on the back of it, the email he got from our um, town attorney. Um, and, uh, in terms of enforceability, um, has also been, um, checked out. I don't know if you want to speak to that, Chief?
We handed out tonight.
I think you.
Uh, yeah, um, basically checked with the, um, uh, state's attorney about the the policy being enforceable and what needs to be done for that. And um, so we feel pretty good about the the policy that's, uh, that's in front of you. Are there any, uh, questions?
Yeah, Gary, just, uh, the second, uh, senator, the waypoint center shall be open to the public from dawn until dusk. Is there, you think you ought to clarify the thing that the building's not going to be open till dawn to dusk? It's just the area?
Yeah, so that's, so the waypoint visitor center, um, um, that's a good point. It has a, uh, an inside and an outside. And so, um, basically, um, the, uh, the inside of the building has varying hours and, um, uh, the the policy does apply to, um, uh, to the outside of the building. There's, um, uh, pretty much everything that's within the the parking lot. Um, so there's, there's a circular parking lot and, um, it is clearly marked if the the policy is accepted, uh, the signage will be going up for, uh, dawn to dusk and no trespassing. Um, but certainly the building, um, uh, when it's locked and closed, um, does not apply in terms of it being open dawn to dusk.
And that dusk, um, for that building, the people, the, uh, who, people are using it now at the, um, chamber. They're not there. What time do they leave?
Uh, so formally, they're they're closed right now, uh, but we are, uh, meeting with them, uh, tomorrow morning to determine, um, uh, what hours they are, uh, uh, informally having the center open and, uh, responding to phone calls for visitors. They, it 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 closed when there was the, um, uh, in, uh, March, when we had the stay at home orders and the, uh, issues internally, uh, the chamber, uh, closed at that time, uh, formally, and it's, uh, posted as such.
We need to adopt?
Yes.
Policy?
Yes, that is the request.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we adopt the addendum policy concerning the general use and policy and rules of the waypoint center located at seventeen Depot Street. Bellows Falls is presented here in the document tonight.
Second. Motion been made and seconded uh, to adopt general use policy and rules waypoint center. I just have one, one question here. The the part that says if the primary per goals of the waypoint center are to promote regional economic development tourism and to provide information on sites and businesses to visitors and residents, um, this is definitely the direction, having something in writing here, uh, we need. But further on down, it says the town manager or their designee shall be responsible for the enforcement, so. I, I guess in clarifying that would be the town manager would designate the village police chief or their officers or would you attempt to handle it, um? Not sure what that mean. Who who would the town manager?
I think whoever the town manager designates.
The town manager could designate the village police.
Designate whoever he wanted to to enforce and and manage that.
Okay. Any other questions? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor would signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, we'll go back to number three. It looks like we have Laura's Stone is here now. Um, you want to speak first on anything, Chuck?
I don't. All right, Lauren, um, oh, perfect.
Hi there. Do you have any updates for the select board and the town folk here? What's happening with the bridge construction project?
Sure. Are you ready for me to go now?
We're ready.
For it.
Okay, so, um, Chuck asked me to come here today and just give an update on Bridge Thirty Eight over the Green Mountain Railroad. Um, we had a regional concerns meeting a couple months ago. I figured I'd start the update reading the weekly that I sent to our management team, just so people who were not at that original meeting um, know kind of what we discussed, and so you can hear um, the issues that I brought forward to our management team. Um, if that sounds good with you guys.
Sure.
So here's the weekly that I wrote, and this was, um, a couple days following our meeting. So a regional concerns meeting was held on the evening of August fourth concerning bridge number thirty eight on US Route Five in Rockingham over the Green Mountain Railroad. The select board, emergency services, businesses and several residents of Rockingham were in attendance. The scoping engineer, myself, uh, presented background information on the current condition of the bridge and proposed replacement project. Overall, most attendees were receptive, were receptive to the selected alternative of a full bridge replacement, however, would prefer a temporary bridge versus the proposed six-week bridge closure with traffic maintained on an off-site detour. A detour of six weeks was selected based on site constraints. The business owner at the marina just north of Herrick's Cove in Rockingham expressed concerns at the meeting about impacts to his business. He is worried about the loss of business both from cars not driving past his business as well as from those that do not want to go the additional distance around the detour. While travelers from the north will not have any additional travel time or distance, travel travelers from the south would have an additional twelve point five miles added to their journey each way. V-Trans will need to work closely with the business owners to determine optimal closure timing and duration. During the meeting, there was also concern expressed about increased response times for emergency vehicles. Emergency response personnel expressed concern about the trailer park community north of Bridge Number Thirty Eight and are concerned about an increase in fifteen minutes for emergency response time for an ambulance. The EM personnel present at the meeting stressed that every minute counts in the event of a heart attack and that an extra five minutes in response time can have a significant out outcome in those types of emergency situations. The mutual aid available for Rockingham is Springfield, and concern was raised that that response times from Springfield are just as long as the response time around the detour. Proceeding forward with a bridge closure will require additional project outreach and meetings with emergency services commute um, the emergency service community in order to mitigate risks and come up with the best plan of action. Overall, the business owners, emergency response and select board participants at the meeting felt that a one-way alternating temporary bridge is warranted at this location. It'll be important to have a robust public outreach effort that communicates closely with businesses and emergency services. A public outreach coordinator will need to be brought on early for this project. As a more detailed construction schedule is developed, we will refine the closure duration to possibly accommodate a four-week closure versus the proposed six-week closure. Uh, the Rockingham project is currently scheduled for construction starting in twenty twenty thirty. So that's, um, that's the update that I gave our management team. So I think it it represented your concerns fairly accurately. I think Ben also had concerns about commuter traffic commuting to, um, to Bellows Falls. And that certainly was discussed as well. So following this weekly, we brought this up in a meeting at our structure staff meeting. Um, we brought it up to the management team. We, we brought up the, on the screen, the temporary bridge layouts and talked about what kind of impacts a temporary bridge would have. So, yes, a temporary bridge does cost more, but it's also impacts at the site, its impacts working over the railroad uh, that we did determine that we're still going to be moving forward with a closure. Um, so on one side of the bridge, there are, there are closed houses in really close proximity. On the other side of the bridge, it is very heavily vegetated. It would require, um, quite a bit of tree clearing. There would be archi, there's an archaeologically sensitive area, pre-contact archaeological sensitive area that there would be impacts to with a temporary bridge. And there's also a ledge outcrop in the southwest quadrant that would require blasting for placement of a temporary bridge. Um, and just looking at all of those impacts and especially look, working over the railroad and working in railroad right-of-way, our management team did choose to move forward with a closure. Um, so we are expecting, um, a letter signed by the management team to be sent to the town. I was hoping it was going to happen before this meeting tonight, but you know, internal, um, workings are sometimes a little slow. Uh, so you should be expecting a letter from our management team stating that we are moving forward with a closure, stating why we feel that that this is the right way to go.
Okay. So what what's your part about? You're gonna meet with emergency services? Did you say that in your?
Yeah.
In your letter? Did they respond back that they'd also like to do that?
Yeah, so I think that's a great point to bring up. So that will be later in the project development process. Certainly, we are moving forward with a closure, but we would really like to partner with the town. We'd like to partner with businesses, partner with emergency services to mitigate those risks. Um, and we talked a little bit about that at, at the regional concerns meeting. Um, I know we've, um, we've placed an emergency vehicle on the other side of bridges before. I believe the state has even.
You mentioned that, but that that that's not going to work. It's, I'm telling you, that's a problem. And the twelve point five miles you mentioned for the marina, um, I think he stated when he was here that night, most of his clients towing a boat wouldn't be able to take your al alternate detour. They would have to go all the way. And it may be twelve point five miles on a map or as a crow flies, but it's a significant detour for emergency personnel and and for that gentleman's business. And like Ben, who's not here tonight, who spoke that night, is a lieutenant with the with the village fire department here. So his response time to a call in the village where he can typically make it in two to three minutes would would be upwards of twenty minutes. And as most of us who have, who live here and see what they're doing with the ninety one bridge, simply traveling over Bridge Thirty Eight, if you were to look to the northwest, you would see the temporary bridges and platforms and what they've done to to provide, um, service access to to what to that project. It it seems pretty uh, possible to put a temporary bridge in when we're, when we look up just to the left and see the amount of temporary bridges they've put over there. Yes, sir.
Laura, if you're to go, like, it's just kind of a, uh, question that probably I know the answer to, but I'll ask anyway. Is that bridge too narrow to have one-way traffic on it and do the other half? I mean, we've done that in other bridges before.
Replacing the whole.
Yeah, so it's not only a matter, it's not only a matter of the width, which it is fairly narrow, but it's a non-redundant system. So this structure only has two girders underneath the bridge. And so you can't, um, you can't remove half the bridge because then it would only be supported on one girder. So yes, it is the width and it's because of the non-redundant system. Phase construction is just, it's not possible here.
Okay.
Anyone else? Susan?
No, all set, thanks.
Stefan?
All set, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We we appreciate you, you taking that information back to them. We know it's not your decision and we know how things work, but we appreciate, um, you coming and and talking with us and hearing our concerns and hopefully we can get together and and try to figure out that time, uh, during the closure so everyone can stay safe and and get to work.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rob is here with you. I don't, he doesn't have anything to say. We could, so that's it for our agenda items. Excuse me. Chuck, you have anything? So we need to. we need to uh, review the agenda items for our next regular select board meeting, which will be October twentieth. Um, I, I can't think of anything right this minute.
Department?
Rec, rec department.
Uh, we'll also have an update. Um, I'm very pleased, uh, to be able to, so, um, the last select board meeting, Peter Golick, uh, raised the issue of a, a return cost. We have the opportunity to, uh, go out and look at the highway department on Friday, see those new floors and we'll have an update for you all about sort of the cleanup directive and how it's, it's, it's changed both garages actually, but we'll start with the one oh three.
And we will have, uh, for those who missed earlier, we, uh, voted on a new manager today, so that, that will be his second day on the job for that meeting. That'll be exciting.
Yes.
Could be for him.
And
I'll be home doing twelve ounce curls.
Perhaps, uh, if it's important to anyone, we could get an update with the process and cost of the recent flood image for that, for that meeting, maybe?
Um, yes, uh, I hope to have, um, that sooner.
Okay.
And, um, that will appear on my dailies. It's already started. Um, we already know the cost of a, um, uh, a, a commercial grade fitting pipe versus the residential grade. So we, that was three dollars that, um, could have been spent to better use. But we're trying to get a, a good handle on, um, all the expenses, which included this weekend, um, a fair amount of, um, to work, try to dry everything out.
So if I may, um, we, the total cost to us in full will be a thousand dollars for our insurance deductible because it's an insurance claim.
Okay. I was, I was just thinking if anybody wanted details, we could put it on the agenda, but it's not super important to me. So that's it for now. We got rec department, um, and we'll, we'll add from there. Uh, we need to review agenda items for our next joint board meeting, which is a ways away. Um, we don't have anything for that right now. Review and approve orders, bills and warrants.
Motion to approve orders, bills and warrants.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, uh, to approve orders, bills and warrants. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes. Any other business? Susan?
Nope, all set. Thanks.
Stefan?
No, sir.
Peter?
Uh, a couple of items, um, recycle, uh, number one. Chuck and I and Josh have been, uh, discussing uh, updating the pricing down there, the fees for different items. I have a printout here that you're welcome to look at. Doesn't have to have action on it tonight. Uh, but one of the other things that's on here is um, food scraps are now required to be disposed of either there or with your local hauler. And we are getting quite a bit of recycle business there for food scraps. So we, uh, on the backside, we've, we've put in a, uh, a price for at least, uh, one, currently one, one ticket that would cover a white bag to get rid of your, uh, thing. We've got seven containers down there right now that are being hauled out every week and Josh estimates, I guess, those help from Shannon is probably going to be six, seven thousand dollars. Uh, by the time we get down to the end of the year and, uh, I think we ought to be collecting something for that stuff. But as you can see, there's no real huge increases here. We're up maybe a quarter on bags uh, for the rubbish, uh, a couple of bucks on, on, uh, the other items. Uh, we have no, heard no feedback on them saying that you're too high. Just let us know when you're going to jack the price and they're happy with it. Um, so you can prove these for maybe something on the next week or something. Josh is checking on how much we're getting. They're, they're supposed to be charging for the C F Cs. Uh, that's why you'll see there's no increase on those four items up there, the refrigerator, freezer, air conditioner, dehumidifier. Uh, so as soon as we get that price, we may be fluctuating on that one, but other than that, that there for your, uh, information, then hopefully we can get something going to increase the revenue down there.
When would this be increasing? I mean, if, we have to approve this or what happens with this?
Yeah, the board can approve it. Uh, uh, well, we're just waiting to see what we can get with that C F C, uh, removal, uh. It, right now, we're only charging fifteen dollars for them and then we just take what we can get for the metal.
Maybe?
On the containers.
The twentieth, we could have this on the agenda and get.
Yeah, that's.
For price increases for.
Get an update with everything that's going on down there. Hear, hear, hear about that complaint and.
For, for price increasing, we do not need board approval. So we set a budget and if, uh, the department is going to make changes that would increase the revenues, it's actually not a board item.
Okay. Great.
Yeah, but I, I just have concerns about the food scraps because I think you're going to get the food in those bags that go. If some people just have a tiny little thing that they're disposing of.
Right.
So anyway, I think that could be a problem, but
Yeah, so.
I know Springfield does charge for their food scraps, but I don't know how they do it.
And we would be, um, looking at and comparable to anything around us, um, and also weighing the pros and cons exactly like you're stating. We don't want people to be throwing them away because we make it too effective for them to dispose of it.
Great. Anything else?
Yeah, the, uh, the manager's office seems the new gentleman's starting the nineteenth. I think we should have it reinstated back at town hall where it belongs. Right now, that office has got two tables in it. I don't know where.
Um, there's a discussion, um, with the, um, uh, in terms of their long-term location. So that'll be, um, a decision for that, uh, the new gentleman to make. But yes, that's being discussed. So.
We're not discussing anything.
That's right. Uh, we can talk about it after the meeting.
Yeah. I, hey, all set, Peter?
Well, I just think the, the office ought to be back where it belongs and, and if he decides after.
I think he said they're going to discuss it and we just announced who it was and when they're starting. So I'm pretty sure that, that'll be addressed by the staff.
There's a number of options. I don't think it's a policy or budget matter, but there's also the old public works director office where he has
Correct.
Given the COVID where there's a conference room outside. So prior to, um, a new manager coming in, we're going to leave everything the way it is and allow them to decide where they would like to be located.
Okay.
Are we talking located in the building? Are we looking?
Wherever they would, wherever they deem they should be located, that's what we'll do because it's not a policy or a budget matter.
No, I understand it's not a policy or budget matter, but are we talking locating in a different building other than town hall? Is that what we're talking?
We're going to let the new manager decide. We are going to let the person decide where they want to be located.
Well, no, then I'm going to agree with Peter. If you have a town manager, people expect your town manager to be in the town hall.
I know, but you guys want to make decisions on everything and this is not policy or budget.
Well.
It's not policy or budget.
I'm sorry. I want to cut this, um, short. The manager will be at the town hall. That's not being.
Okay, because there's already, I've already been asked questions about rumors saying that town manager isn't going to be in the town hall. And you're probably going to have some people upset about that.
How are there rumors?
Rumors about that.
We're, we're moving on here.
It was till today. How would you hurt any?
Point of order. This has nothing to do with anything. We had a really good productive meeting and I'd like to thank everyone. I don't have any other business. I'd like to thank everyone for all their hard work as usual. And entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in favor say.